Special Anacortes Planning Commission meeting. I'll take the role. I see Ms. Ruther and Dr. Martin not here at the present time. Draft minutes of the July 13th meeting will be provided at a later time. Mr. Meesmer, is there any new correspondence?
No correspondence, Mr. Chair.
I don't believe there's any new business. On old business, we're moving into tonight's agenda, which is the critical areas, regulation, amendments to address riparian corridors and riparian management zones. Ms. Meesmer, take it away. While you're getting that ready, I would note that we do have an email document here from Loring Advising on behalf of Evergreen Islands, I believe, in hand.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, so Loring Advising, on behalf of Evergreen Islands, submitted comments. I transmitted those to the commissioners today by email, and you have a hard copy in front of you.
Thank you, and we will certainly take them under advisement.
Thank you. So riparian corridors. As you can see in your packet, the city is required by Growth Management Hearings Board to address best available science for basically streams and stream buffers. And so city staff got together, and we've been working on what that might look like. We also engaged Fiona McNair, who is here this evening with Geo Engineers, to help revise our current best available science report on streams and buffers, which we are now proposing to call riparian corridors, riparian water course, and riparian management zone, RMZ. But the first thing that we're required to do by the Growth Management Hearings Board was to address, as you'll see on this slide, the buffer averaging to no less than 75%. So we've struck this last portion of that sentence, and that complies with Growth Management Hearings Board agreement with the city and with Evergreen Islands. So riparian corridors consist of the riparian water course, riparian management zone, and that was previously noted as stream and buffer. The riparian management zone is the area within no less than 100 feet of the water course measured from the ordinary high watermark, and the RMZ may exceed 100 foot based on a critical area report that would establish site potential tree height, which could be considerably more than 100 feet, could be up to 160. These are water course types that are listed in the code and have been listed there for some time, and Ms. McNair will talk more about these in her presentation as we move along this evening. So this is an example from WDFW Riparian Ecosystems, Volume Two, of what the riparian management zone and the water course. So this area, if you can see my cursor, is the water course, ordinary high watermark, and the riparian management zone would be this 100-foot zone here, and that would be on both sides. So this tells us that what we're proposing is that those areas of development within a riparian corridor, which again is that 100 foot on each side of the stream from the ordinary high watermark, must provide a critical area report prepared by a qualified professional describing the RMZ and the proposed RMZ based on Washington Department Fish and Wildlife site potential tree height, but in no case would that be less than 100 foot. In some cases where we might have an undeveloped parcel, say some acreage with a stream that runs through it, that there very well could be a 140-foot buffer on that or riparian management zone based on site potential tree height. As you know, most of our areas in Anacortes are developed with structures on them. For instance, in skyline along Clyde River, I think there are two undeveloped lots in that whole area, and we staff are currently working on putting together a map that would show everyone the undeveloped lots along various streams in Anacortes. I think total there might be 40 undeveloped lots. We'll have a map for our next meeting that will describe all those for everybody. So here is an item that lets us know that if you, within a riparian corridor, if there is some development proposed, for instance, you know, if you, essentially it's prohibited except for if you have no other means to access the site. So if you have a parcel and you have a stream running through it, the only way to access it is to cross that stream, then this lays out what the perimeters are to do that. And you would also have to have a WDFW permit to do that, and there would be quite a bit of permit requirements from them as well. But here, we're talking about non-toxic wood. It would have to be a bridge. You couldn't fill anything. You couldn't put in a fish passage culvert. It would have to basically be a bridge built from one side to the other side from the ordinary high watermark or so. And again, that would have to be designed by a qualified professional engineer, an biologist, to determine the best methods to do that with little to no disturbance in that riparian management zone. This talks more about the riparian management zone. It also lets you know that existing improved areas of public or private streets and driveways are excluded from the riparian management zone regulations. Also tells us that development is prohibited in the management zone except with some exceptions. It's about platted lots existing prior to adoption of this ordinance, which is 4025. If the applicant can demonstrate through these various limited things that, you know, you could actually have a development area that would be not less than 75 feet and then another not less than 50 feet, so you'd be able to get a little closer, but that riparian management zone still exists. So that 100-foot riparian management zone exists whether or not you're able to develop in there or not. And to do that, an applicant would have to provide a report that describes the functions and values of the existing riparian management zone and how it's going to be restored to provide greater protection of the water course and the management zone itself. And so there, it's, I'm going to say that it's possible that we may end up changing some of this language in item A here from that 75 and 50 feet. I want to mention that we will be working with Washington Department Fish and Wildlife to go through all of this and, you know, perhaps change the language around so that it fits with what their thoughts are as well as what the city's thoughts are. So that's upcoming. We haven't had a chance to do that yet. Small project waiver. So this allows applicants or homeowners to, you know, have fences, rockeries, or similar features that wouldn't disturb that riparian management zone, doesn't contain any floor area, does not remove trees or native vegetation, does not block wildlife movements, and mitigates impacts to ecological functions. So in your packet, you did receive the revised storm, stream buffer best available science provided by Geo Engineers, and that were, of course, is Fiona McNair. Mapping of the water courses were included in that. And with that, it was rather short, but what I'd like to do now is introduce Ms. Fiona McNair with Geo Engineers, and she has a presentation on the best available science
Good evening. So as Don said, my name's Fiona McNair with Geo Engineers. Geo Engineers, we wrote the 2019 best available science report, which was the original one, and we just drafted this new revised best available science report. And so tonight, what I thought would be a good idea, and Don thought would be a good idea, is just to go through and summarize what's new, and, can you hear me?
Could you speak into the microphone a little closer?
Oh, closer, thank you. I'll lean. What's new in the 2022 report? Oh, sweet, thank you. So what's new in the report, and I'll do a very quick summary of what's in the 2019 report as well. So what's new? Well, I'll get into more detail. This is kind of an outline of the presentation. So we mapped all publicly documented streams, and I'll show you how that was different from the 2019 report. We updated the BAS review, and a lot of what has changed since 2019 is around the site potential tree height, which I will get into if you're not totally familiar with that concept, review some of the site potential tree height estimates in the city limits for Anacortes, and then talk about riparian functions, how it relates to its location in the channel, and how that relates to site potential tree height, and then I'll talk about some of the recommendations at the end of the document. So in the 2019 document, there were, this was the GIS data from the city. It was just listing the 15 streams listed in the critical areas ordinance at that time, so it lists 15 streams. So the difference in the update, part of that is that we have an amazing biologist who's also very GIS savvy, so she really wanted to do this, so that kind of helped it, is that we took all sources. There's all sorts of publicly available stream information out there coming from ecology and DNR, WFW, Northwest Indian Fisheries Commission, fish use, stream, all that kind of information. But what we did was we took that information, combined it with the city's information, and then did a QAQC looking at aerial photographs and LiDAR, just to see if there had been any changes, because sometimes LiDAR tells you really obviously where the channel is, and you can just do little adjustments. But for the most part, this is publicly mapped information except for minor tweaks. And the other information is that we just used the DNR Forest Type Map. So that's their Forest Practices Application Mapping Tool website. You go there, they show you the pretty maps, and it tells you what the typing is. Sometimes it's unclassified, so there are some unclassified streams. Sometimes the stream isn't there, which also means it would be unclassified. So this is an example of one of the streams that was not mapped in 2019. It was just shown as a wetland. So it's Turner's Creek. It starts as, you know, a channelized flow inside a wetland complex and then flows into Skagit County. So that's just one example of just mapping update. And then this is on the south end of Anacortes, Hartborn. It's a tributary to Lake Erie, and you can see here it's mapped as a fish-bearing stream based on DNR data, and it has tributary headwaters that are shown as green, which is non-fish-bearing. So that's just an example of, again, the mapping exercise. And I wanted to make sure that it's clear that we were not hired. It would be a big exercise to do this, to go out and walk every stream and type it and ground truth the stream typing and produce a document and all that kind of stuff. So that has not been done. This is just a desktop exercise, not a field exercise at this point. So I think Don already introduced this concept, and so I'll go through quickly, but I wanted to make sure that it's clear, at least at a, you know, 30,000-foot level, what stream typing is. So in the code, it's defined under the WAC 030, and Don showed this, you know, image. This is basically very similar to what's on DNR's website, and this is kind of the, what's the word? It's the non-WAC version, the simplified version of the description. So there are no type S or shoreline streams in the city of Anacortes. There are type S water bodies like Little Cranberry Lake. You have to be an average of 20 CFS mean flow to be a shoreline stream, so that's like a big stream, like Nooka Champs. There are type F streams and more than likely type NP and type NS streams in the town. But the thing I wanted to make clear is that people get confused because they hear the term "fish-bearing stream," and that means, people think it means there has to be fish in it, but the definition of a fish-type stream or an F-type stream is that it has fish, and you've documented that, or it has characteristics that could support fish. And so it has physical definitions that are outside of and separate from the definition of there needing to be fish present. So I already kind of talked about this. Type S, it, there's a lot, there have to be big flows for it to be. There are no streams in the city of Anacortes that are type S. And I just wanted to kind of go through here that type F, this is the 030, which is the, not the interim, but the current, you know, updated water typing system. And there's a lot of stuff in here that doesn't relate to Anacortes and kind of goes on and on and on and on, and I'm not going to go through it. But what is kind of useful is when you check into the 030 and look at the interim water typing, it starts to give you more hints for the type 2 and type 3, which are the fish or F types. It starts to give you some more hints. So the high fish and wildlife, those are going to be streams that are right on the edge of being shorelines, big, big, big water bodies, and so they're going to have 20 feet or greater bankful widths. They're going to be very low gradient, and there might be an off-channel, oxbow channel. And then you get to a type 3 stream, and that's more like a moderate amount of habitat, and the channels are going to be 2 feet or greater, so less than 20 and greater than 2. So this is where Anacortes' streams are really, if you were using the interim system, they would fit primarily in this type 3 world where they're, you know, 2 feet to more like 5, 7, 8 feet wide. That's sort of an Anacortes stream from at least the experience that I've seen. Okay, so one slide is all I have to talk about the 2019 report just for time's sake, but really what it focused on was water quality functions and habitat functions of buffers. Buffers also do similar things to wetland buffers, like water infiltrates through them, and that regages the groundwater and leads to hyperheic flows, which is that cold water that comes in through the stream, but they overlap a lot with the water quality characteristics. So we just kind of focused on those as the main headers. So you're talking about removing sediments and pollutants, so suspended sediments, just turbidity, or it can be, you know, nitrogen, phosphorus, those kind of things. And then the other thing that is important with streams is thermal loading, so you want shade, so you keep the stream cool, and that's especially important for some on it, fish that like cold water. And then we also talked about the habitat, which was kind of split into the in-stream habitat, which you're thinking about fish, amphibians, insects, large wood, small woody debris, input of litter, leaf litter, so that the insects have things to eat, that kind of stuff. And then the riparian and upland wildlife habitat, which they need to drink from the stream and use the stream, but for the most part, they also spend, you know, amphibians even spend sometimes half their life or more outside of the stream, and they need that adjacent upland habitat. So that's what that focused in, focused on, and there'll be a slide a few down that talks about like what recommendations came from that and where we're going from there. So what we, the next step, like what was sort of added on for this updated version of the report, is that it's really looking in at the riparian functions and using the site potential tree height to think about the functions that happen in riparian systems and the sizes that are appropriate. So the definition of site potential tree height is the average maximum height of the tallest dominant trees in a stand for a given site class, and they define it as, you know, mature or old growth, 200 years or older. So site class or quality of the site, you can think about that as like the difference between being on a rocky bluff with no soil and no, you know, a lot of sun, no rain versus deep soils, low gradient, and lots of nutrients, et cetera, et cetera. So you have, it's telling you the site's innate ability to grow biomass or grow plants, right? So that's, those are the kind of analyses that WFW and others are doing when they're classifying site potential tree height at a given location. And generally in Anacortes, they, oh, not Anacortes, sorry, generally in Washington, they range anywhere from 140 to 240, although I've seen, you know, site potential tree height for alders at 91. So sometimes it's less, and there's probably even trees that are taller than that, because I've definitely seen trees taller than 240 in old growth sites. So, and this, I think Don touched on this, that in Anacortes, just looking at the WFW PHS mapper site that they have for site potential tree heights, the full range is 91 to 231 feet, but there's only a couple that are 91 or that high in the 200s. The vast majority of them are 165 to 189, so it's pretty consistent, and most of them are Douglas fir for their climax species with a couple of spots that are red alder. So it's kind of interesting. I was surprised. I thought some of them would have been cedar. Okay, so when you're thinking about the buffer and the site potential tree height, the literature is really only talking about certain functions that are in that buffer. Like we talked about, the 2019 report talked about, you know, the biodiversity corridor, the migration for wildlife, and all those things that are happening, and that's not really related to tree height. So this is sort of an extra add-in to think about like a tree, and if it falls, or a tree, and if it provides shade, or a tree, and if it drops litter during a windstorm, what is it doing? What functions is it providing? But it's not really related to things like filtering out pollution or necessarily providing wildlife corridor, although if you think about it, an old growth forest has an open understory that's easier for wildlife to get through. That would be the only thing that's related. So the things that they're really focusing on in these, you know, these WWFW report and other reports, when they talk about site potential tree height, is large wood recruitment, shading, and litter fall. And they actually talk a little bit about, you know, roots and how that controls banks and helps the banks hold it together, but that's happening at the, pretty close to the bank, so that's not happening at the edge of the site potential tree height, edge of the buffer. So this is what I was talking about, where this is the, this was the sort of overall result of the 2019 report, looking at the 50-foot buffers, which were the existing buffers stipulated at the time for type F streams in Anacortes. And so looking at that, basically, the BAS science was basically saying it does a reasonable job, a 50-foot buffer does a reasonable job of filtering out sediments and phosphorus and as well as some other, you know, sediment-related pollutants, but it doesn't always do a good job with nitrogen, depends on what the water table's like and how much water's there, and it has a moderate to low, low quality for wildlife, because wildlife is like a bigger, you know, a 3,000-foot buffer is, you know, what everybody, I mean, a wildlife buffer is something where you, it's hard to define a wildlife buffer and what is needed unless you are thinking about the target species. And I think we talked about this several years ago when I was here talking about it, because what you need for, you know, elk, herds of elk and grizzly bears versus hummingbirds and amphibians and small mammals, those are very different wildlife habitat needs. So that's why this literature has such a wide swath for the wildlife buffer, because it really depends on the species that are there. Okay, so this was kind of the meat of the studies talking about site tree height potential. So before I get into it, I'll just quickly introduce that the Y-axis is cumulative effectiveness, which is basically the, how well it's functioning for these four functions. So producing litter, root strength of your banks, putting, you know, acting as a source for large woody debris into the stream, and providing shade for the stream. So it's the cumulative effectiveness on the Y-axis, which is this one over here, and then distance from the channel, but this is, this X-axis is not in feet, it's in proportion of the site potential tree height. So if you're one, say it's a 200 is your site potential tree height, then this one for that particular study would be representing 200 feet, and this middle part, the .5, would be 100 feet. But it would be 150 if the site potential tree height for that site in that study was 100. So it's just like, it's a, it's an axis that's corrected so that it can be consistent for each site just based on site potential tree height. So what they found in looking at hundreds and hundreds of studies is that your, sort of makes sense that as you get past like half the height of the tree, the marginal increase that you are getting for each new foot of the distance and buffer that you're adding to that is decreasing, right? So you're getting a decreasing returns after, you know, about .5 or .6 of a site potential tree height, and that all, and that as you can tell, there's, the areas closer to the stream are providing much more per unit of foot that they're offering. So there, it's a, the more valuable, so to speak, part of the buffer, which I think kind of is common sense. And so if you think, if the buffer width were equal to, if you just kind of truncate this with this yellow line and show half the site potential tree height, well, you're getting almost 100% of the root strength, 90%, which is that brown line at the top, and then about 90% of the litter fall, which is this dashed line here, and then right here where the shading and the coarse woody debris intersect with the .5, you're getting about what, 70 or, you know, 70, 75% of the cumulative effectiveness functions. So basically, whoops, backspace. So if you apply that logic in Anacortes with the most common site potential tree heights being from 65 to 189, and you take 50% of that, it's basically saying that when you have a buffer or a protected area, if you want to call it, of 85 to 90 feet, then you are going to be providing most of these site potential tree height functions, most of the root strength and litter fall, and 70 to 75% of the large woody debris functions. So this is just summarizing the recommendations at the end of the report, basically recommending to consider adopting the provisions that are, that surround riparian management zones. Again, so again, Don's already talked about most of these things, and then what, why, why coming down to the no less than 100 feet? That's based on looking at the site potential tree heights in Anacortes and seeing that in general, 80 to 9500 feet is the average 50% site potential tree height. And so that's sort of like the basic minimum, right? Because Don was saying some sites, if you go out and do a site-specific study, you're going to be like, oh, well, the site potential tree height here is 170, but it's just setting a baseline of 100 of, don't go below that, because that's a sweet spot where you're getting most of the functions. And then, then Don also talked about this, that there's, in parcels that already exist where you have some development that, you know, would be required for whatever reason it is, it's a, you know, reasonable use, et cetera, et cetera, the lot shape, et cetera, you are, based on what we just talked about, about all the functions are in that first closest part of the buffer, well, then you want to have your riparian development area be no closer than 50 feet, so you're keeping that 50 feet intact, and then you can assign a bigger, like a larger distance if the stream supports anadromous species, because that's sort of a standard recommendation for those more valued resources. And then again, that any kind of impacts inside the management zone would be mitigated. And that's it.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions?
Chair. Thank you very much for that presentation. I had a question about the math, and I'm not a math major, so please be patient. The average, yeah, if you go back, the average that you mentioned for Anacortes was between 65 and 189. Is that correct?
What's that, sorry?
The average SPTH in Anacortes you have here is between 65 and 189 feet.
So we didn't-
I'm sorry, not the average, the most common.
Yeah, we just thought those are the most common, yeah. So there was the 91 and the 231, you know, that would-
So looking at the, as you described this, this scheme here on the X and Y axis, it's a ratio of a number. So 50% of 85 is one number, and 50% of 189 is quite a different number, right?
Yes.
So between the most common numbers of 65 and 189, 50% of each of those is very different, which leads to a different buffer?
Yes, so this, this is, like I said, each of these is going to be based on a tree height, right? So in this case, it's, the study was on site potential tree height. So if you, yeah, if your stand is 200 feet, then this study is showing that there is, you know, the effectiveness at 200 feet versus at 100 feet away from your stream, right?
If you go forward a slide, please.
Sorry, say again.
If you can go forward a slide, please.
Oh, yeah.
And then here it says recommend no less than 100 feet, and then you had also mentioned, but at no point under 50 feet.
Oh, sorry, so that's, that's sort of the confusing part. The riparian management zone is the full protected zone that, you know, the project proponent and their, whoever's writing their report for them, is going to recommend based on going to WFW's website, looking at the site, looking at the stream, doing all their thing. And they can, so they could come back, like I said, and there's a 91 in there, right? But this is saying, no, you can't go less than 100. So if you went in and you found, WFW had a 91, the RMZ would need to be set at 100, because it's just sort of a set minimum. But then within that, there is the riparian management zone, but then within it, say the stream's here, there's this zone here that is the non-development zone, if you want to call it, but then out here is the development zone where you're inside the riparian- But then, out here is the development zone, where you're inside the riparian management zone, but because of it being a prior developed lot, as before this was adopted, then that is an area where, you know, development will be allowed with mitigation. And that it would be a smaller or a farther-out zone if it was an anadromous stream. That, were those visuals helping? Probably should have drawn something up for you.
So, my question with regards to that chart would be, that chart is, the slope of those curves for each of those areas that we're concerned about are fixed regardless of what tree height we throw into that, right? So, if you wouldn't mind just going back again?
Yeah.
So, that would suggest, then, for a 200-foot tree, your 50% effectiveness would have the same impact as a 100-foot tree, right? I would, I guess-
Yeah, and so, this is obviously, there's so much data in here.
Yeah.
And so, it's mind-blowing, because the sites are all very different, and the species are all very different, and the slopes and the stream sizes are all very different. So, this isn't like, this is not like a focus-
This is representative of just one example. So, it's probably not a good example, then, to use for various different tree heights and very different locations.
Yeah, and this is not something that you would use in your critical areas report to submit to planning. This is just sort of to conceptualize how these functions work as you go out and out and out. And so, you're starting here at the stream, and you're walking out. And as you get farther and farther out-
Yep.
-they get just less and less and less effective. Like, you're just, it's so, it's so important here and so important here, it's getting less and less important as you go farther out, yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just want to make sure that this isn't necessarily a good tool to use for various different tree height-
Yeah, yeah.
-situations. May I continue?
Please, here.
So, I wanted to, thank you, by the way, for being here. I appreciate you taking the time out of your day. Classifying streams. So, between 2019 and 2022, we found an additional 12 streams.
Well, those streams were always there, and they, and they were always defined in the code, but those, what did I say, 15?
Well, we went from 15 to 27.
Those were the only named ones. But it would, they was still, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas were still defined as waters of the state, streams, lakes, like they were still defined.
So, the number of streams didn't change, just the fact that we've named them now-
Yeah, we're showing more in the-
Okay. That's a good clarification. And then, you said that you didn't necessar, the state or you didn't necessarily walk each stream to necessarily assess their ability to support fish life or salmon life or-
Yes, there is, it is, I have no idea, when I, when you look at the Forest Practices Application Mapping Tool, and you talk to, well, you talk to WDFW, they know, those people, you know, they go out and they, they map, they go to streams. So, there's, there's certain streams where we kind of know that WDFW has walked them, but I can, what I'm thinking is just like, someone hasn't like walked from the mouth to the headwaters and typed it all the way and found the break. Sometimes, those are done with LiDAR and aerial photos, and it was done 10 years ago, and they're supposed to be updated every five years, but you know how that goes with staffing and everything, so.
So, then the data, then, signifying or classifying a stream as being fish-bearing and non-fish-bearing, we can accept that as being proven by an actual observation?
Yeah, we cannot know that.
Okay.
And there is a process, that basically, if you go to their website, DNR's website, and they say, this is not fish-bearing, right? And you want to contest that, there's a process for that. So, if you find a fish there, or think that it's a fish-bearing stream, you can go and change that.
Okay. And, yeah, go ahead.
I had a follow-up to Mr. Graff's question about that. On the lower end of the F-type streams, it was as low as two feet in width, I think, is what it was.
Sorry, say one more time.
I'm sorry, I think on the low end of the F-type streams, it could be down to as little as two feet.
Yes.
How many of those that are designated F-type streams are also seasonal?
In Anacortes? Does that mean, or?
No.
So-
Is that knowable?
Yes, you can have a seasonal F-type stream, for sure. And I, I am not, I think that, honestly, sometimes seasonal streams are seasonal some years and not others. Like, I feel like Happy Valley dries out, but sometimes it doesn't, it depends on the year. And so, I don't know in Anacortes, honestly, and I don't think there's one person who knows them all, yeah.
I was going to ask the same question, that you mentioned that type 3 streams is the, are the preponderance of the number of streams that we have in Anacortes?
Yeah.
Okay. Historically, do you have any data that would show whether Anacortes and the streams in Anacortes are actual, either historically or in the future, going to be fish-bearing or salmon-bearing? You know, if we build it, they will come? Is that the assumption that we're supposed to make here, because they were here before, and because of developmental impacts, they've gone away, but they will come back if we extend our RMZs?
That is definitely something that you could study and answer and work with WDFW on.
But that information isn't necessarily available?
That information's not necessarily there. There are, although in doing this, you know, study now, there are all these, like I think about down by Summit Creek and Turner's and all that, there's a lot of, a lot of the situation could be that there's a fish passage barrier, right? Or there's a culvert that's too long, the fish doesn't want to go in, which is a type of barriers. Fish don't want to go in real, like, dark culverts that are super long.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I know of areas in Watkin County, right, where City of Bellingham, City of Fairhaven are, are doing improvements, because they know for a fact that, you know, salmon want to be there, but they can't right now. And I'm just wondering if we know of that very same situation here in Anacortes?
Yeah, I mean, my, my gut feel is if someone had billions of dollars, you could make Mesa Parts a fish-bearing stream.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Corollary question to that. To what degree are these questions going to be answered when somebody is planning on developing a property and has a report done by a person designated to provide them?
Well, because I, and I think that is, I think that is a detail that is, you know, maybe something that'll come up as this, as these, as this goes through review of WDFW, is that, because currently, there, some of the streams have fish in them, right? There's actual fish using them. And that, the way the codes, the revised code is currently written, is it changes where your development area is, right? And if there, if there were to be, if it were to be as simple as someone just needed to change his culvert, and then fish could come in, then you could argue that that's a pretty simple fix, even if it's under Highway 20, because eventually Washdaw's got to do them all. But, so I think that is, that's an interesting, you know, that's worth talking about, because it, there's some streams that you can look at the grade, and you can just look at whatever other reasons that, you know, the lack of perennial flows, the size of the stream channel, that, no, we don't think this is ever going to support anything other than maybe resident drought.
So, it sounds like some of these streams have tentative designations that you can't really verify, because nobody's actually walked them and, and-
Well, yes, and I think that, well, yes, there's that. The typing is, it's loose.
So, is somebody who-
And don't forget, typing doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean fish use or not fish use, right? Yeah, yeah.
So, if, if it's got one type designated, and somebody comes in to do development, and they have a report done, is that going to influence the typing for that stream, either upwards or downwards, based on findings?
I mean, it's not going to change the DNR maps unless you go through their formal process. But I know that that happens all the time. I talk to WDFW, people are constantly doing studies to say, there's no fish in my stream, there's no way, and they're trying to get it downgraded.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, they, and that's where they would exercise the option of basically protesting the current designation-
Yes, yeah.
-based on new data.
Mm-hmm.
Got it. Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, thank you very much.
Right, yeah.
Our intention tonight is to open the hearing and take some public commentary. If, if your comments are great detail or very lengthy, I would encourage you to submit them in writing as well, and at least give us a few minutes' worth of summary. We will continue the meeting to a future date, so that people will have an opportunity to present after they have a more chance to take a look at the proposals here. So, with that said, is there anyone on, on the virtual meeting raising their hand?
Mr. Chair, there's not.
And is there anyone in the room who would like to make any comments at this time? Please step up, sir.
Good evening, my name is Tom Vlade. Here this evening representing Evergreen Islands. And I grew up in Texas, and I like to say, I like to make short stories long, but I spent a lot of time in Los Angeles. And Los Angeles has three rivers in it, and they're called the Concrete Rivers of Los Angeles. And they actually have recovered a fish run in at least one of those rivers. And so, one would think it'd be impossible for any, anyone to establish fish runs on Fidalgo Island or in the city of Anacortes. But, you know, given the right circumstances, they will come back. And so, and another thing that I think that, as history has, has not been really good about fish, it would be really nice to have salmon running in Greenwich Channel, when it used to be the largest fishery cantering that, that was in the nation. So, you know, that, that happened because humans stopped them from, from doing that run. And I believe that Cutthroat Trout ran up Mesa Parts Creek when it was done. So, anyway, we would, Evergreen Islands is working with our attorney, and our attorney is working with Mr. Meesmer. And we've had some really amicable discussions about the wording. And so, we, you know, we're pushing for the, you know, what it's legally required to protect the environment, the aquatic environment and that. So, to that extent, I greatly appreciate Mr. Meesmer and also Libby Grage's cooperation with us. So, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Years ago, probably 15 years ago, Evergreen Islands, which, board members, which was myself and Brenda Lavender, went out with Ross Barnes, Dr. Barnes, and documented all the streams, and presented them to the city to be included in the Critical Clarities Ordinance. And so, the city hired Aquatera to verify that those were actual streams. And so, the interesting part was that Dr. Barnes named all those streams, and he used different names, appellations for each of the streams. There's Annacole Burne, and the River Clyde, and there's Weaverling Rill. And so, each of those unusual names are Ross's contributions to our city's history. Thank you.
Nice piece of history, thanks. Step up.
Brian Wedger, 81, or 2407 Forest Park Lane. Still can't remember my new address after two years. One thing I'd like to point out that I noticed during your discussion is a bit of a focus on whether a stream would be salmon-bearing or migratory fish-bearing. I want to remind everyone that all of the stream types are very specific habitat, and they support very specific wildlife habitats, and are, for their own sake, rather than just for fish-bearing purposes, should be preserved and maintained under the WDFW standards. And I'd also like to ask about the conclusions of the report. And the final statement in the conclusion of the report was a little bit blurred, but I, I believe it said, basically, we're looking for any mitigation to make sure that there is no net loss. I'm sure that many of you have seen projects come through that have proposed no net loss, and when we look at them out in the field, we can see that that didn't quite happen. So, I would just, I, I believe that's a core value of the original Growth Management Act, is no net loss. And I would wonder how that process can be, I don't want to say enforced, but provided on the ground in perpetuity, when we say no net loss for a project. I, I don't know how the mechanism would work to verify that as the project goes forward, and also as the project is completed. So, I wonder if we could, at least in further discussions, address that mechanism, because that's sort of the bottom line of whether we actually can, on the ground, create preservation and conservation or not. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else look, care to speak tonight? As I said, the meeting, the hearing will be continued to a future date. I'm not sure if we have a specific date, because of the nature of the business coming our way, but that will be publicly announced. Mr. Meesmer, anything else?
Mr. Chair, yeah, thank you. We don't have a specific date right now. We're going to be working with Evergreen Islands, as well as Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, and I'm not quite sure what the timing's going to be on that. I know that Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife are fairly busy, as is everybody else, and it's summertime, so we'll do the best we can to get this information put together, make whatever adjustments are needed with the document, and we'll get another notice out in the paper for our next meeting.
Thank you, sir. If there are no other issues or questions, we will call the meeting to a close, and thank you, everyone.
Do you want any further?
If I may make just one point. I think, so when I went through this information, specifically the municipal code wording, I kind of keyed in on this particular statement here. It is the long-term goal of the city to restore the city's riparian corridors and to protect salmon passage where scientifically justified. I think, you know, based on some of the public comment here, I think we should, I think we should be more clear with what our actual city goals are, right? And I think there were some, it's not just about salmon, it's not just about other fish, it's about, you know, the integrity of those streams, bringing those streams back, et cetera, et cetera. And in fairness to the public, who should have an understanding of what the goal is for the city, maybe we can add some more to that. Just a recommendation.
Absolutely. Well, like I say, we'll work with Evergreen Islands and with WDFW, and, you know, work through the language that actually works for everybody, and also, everybody can understand it.
Paragraph C, 1B. Page 58.
And Mr. Molina?
Mr. Meesmer, in your presentation, you referenced the water quality requirements. Is that based on the state requirement, or does the city have its own, or are we doing it by reference back to the, to the state?
Great question. So, the city has adopted, the Washington State Department of Ecology, recent Stormwater Manual, in fact, the city council just did that like a month ago, maybe? And so, that identifies the water quality that's necessary for a site like this. I think the real key is limiting the impervious area to a maximum of 35% within the development area, within that riparian management zone.
Thank you, that's, that's a nice reference back, so thank you.
All right. I may have been premature, are there any other questions here? Then being brought up, we will now close the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for attending.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.